The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Present.
Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Present.
Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans.
Present.
Alderwoman Hubbard.
Present.
Alderwoman Iglesias.
Present.
Alderman Colder.
Here.
Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther.
Here.
Alderman Ballmer.
Present.
Alderwoman Martin.
Present.
Alderwoman Grass.
Here.
Alderwoman Murphy.
Here.
Alderwoman Howard.
Present.
Alderwoman Green.
Present.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Present.
Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd.
Present.
Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer.
Yeah, Laurie, this is Joe.
Alderman Mohammed.
Present.
Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Bakoro.
Present.
Alderman Orion.
Here.
Alderman Cone. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Here.
Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro.
Present.
President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Rhodey.
Present.
Alderwoman Davis.
Present.
Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Cone. Alderwoman Boyd. Twenty-four present.
Warren being present, we're going to begin today's meeting with prayer. Given all honor to God, Almighty God, source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions. Amen. We dispense with line item three introduction of honored guests, any introduction of honored guests. Alderman from the twenty-third.
As always, I would like to have my friend Greg Meyer as my honored guest.
All right, welcome Greg. Any further introductions, any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the tenth, like to wrap us up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Today, October ninth, it was on this day nineteen forty-four, the St. Louis Cardinals beat the St. Louis Browns to take the all-St. Louis World Series. More importantly, this is world beer and pizza and bowling day. So take all three of those things and have a fun day and night. Thank you.
Right. Alderman, approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes for Friday, October second, twenty twenty.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for approval of the minutes dated October the second, twenty twenty.
Second.
Move by Alderman from twenty-second, second about Alderman from thirteenth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the Alderman's mailboxes.
Dispense with line item seven, would anyone like to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? We will dispense with line items eight through ten. First reading of board bills.
Board Bill one thirty-five sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and Apportement, authorizing and directing the issuance and delivery of sportnet tax taxable tax increment revenue note series twenty twenty-one in aggregate principal amount not to exceed twenty-five million dollars plus cost of issuance and authorizing and directing the taking of other actions and approval and directing the execution of other documents as necessary or desirable to carry out and comply with the intent hereof superseding provisions of prior ordinances of the city to the extent inconsistent with the terms hereof and containing the severability clause. Board Bill one thirty-six sponsored by Alderwoman Evans and ordinance approving a blight in study and a redevelopment plan for North Newstead Avenue, Lexington Avenue, Whittier Street, Kennelley Avenue redevelopment area. Board Bill one thirty-seven sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer and ordinance approving the redevelopment plan dated September twenty-second, twenty twenty for the forty twenty-one Iowa Avenue area. Board Bill one thirty-eight sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Estimate and Apportement, authorizing a first amendment to the Ground Transportation Policy Ordinance six nine three eight two approved February the sixth, twenty thirteen, deleting section six eight four of ordinance six nine three eight two and substituting a new section six four eight, increasing the monthly permit fees for off-airport rental car operators beginning April first, twenty twenty-one, containing severability and containing emergency clause. Board Bill one thirty-nine sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estimate and Apportement, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller of the City of St. Louis to enter into and execute on behalf of the city the seven second amendments to the On Airport Passenger Vehicle Rental Concession Agreement at St. Louis Lambert International Airport between the city and the following concessionaires. The Hertz Corporation, Avis Rent Rental Car, Enterprise Leasing Company, doing business as National Rental Car Enterprise Leasing Company of St. Louis, doing business as Enterprise Rental Car, Budget Rental Car System, doing business as Budget Rental Car, Enterprise Leasing Company of St. Louis, doing business as Alamo Rental Car, and C and J Rental, doing business as Thrifty Car Rental, containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one forty sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estimate and Apportement, authorizing the director and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller of the City of St. Louis, owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport, to enter into and execute on behalf of the city the third amendment to the operating agreement for the management and operation of parking facility services AL two six seven between the city and ABM Aviation, Inc., containing the severability clause and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one forty-one sponsored by Alderman Colder and ordinance adopted and approved pursuant to seven zero point two two zero point one revised statutes of Missouri, authorizing the Director of the Department of Public Safety and the Police Commissioner on behalf of the City of St. Louis to make an entrance to an agreement with the United States Department of Interior National Park Service for both agencies to provide cooperative law enforcement assistance with the city limits of the City of St. Louis, including the Gateway National Park and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one forty-two sponsored by Alderwoman Howard and ordinance approving a blight in study and a redevelopment plan for forty-three twenty through forty-three thirty, forty-three fifty, and forty-three fifty rear South Kings Highway redevelopment area. That is the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to committee.
To the HUSS Committee, Board Bill one thirty-five and one thirty-six, to Neighborhood Development, Board Bill one thirty-seven and one forty-two, to Transportation and Commerce, Board Bill one thirty-eight, one thirty-nine, and one forty, to Public Safety, Board Bill one forty-one. That is the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
The following board bill was reported out of the Streets Committee with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill one thirteen sponsored by Alderman Bosley and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to amend section one of ordinance seven one two, seven one two one zero dated July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty by revising the legal description of Stoddard Street from Jefferson Avenue to Elliott Avenue in the City of St. Louis, Missouri as herein after describing accordance with Charter Authority and in conformity with section one four of Article twenty-one of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board, the following board bill was reported out of Ways and Means with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill ninety-four sponsored by Alderman Todd and ordinance authorizing and directing the Mayor and Comptroller of the City of St. Louis to execute upon receipt of and in consideration of the sum of two hundred and fifty dollars and other good and valuable consideration of quick claim deed to remind, release, and forever quitclaim unto the Veterans Community Project, a certain city-owned property located in City Block one eight six eight, which property is known and numbered as thirty-seven twenty-four Aldine in the City of St. Louis, Missouri. The following board bills were reported out of public safety with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill one twenty-six sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard and President Reed and ordinance authorizing and directing the Fire Commissioner on behalf of the Mayor and the City of St. Louis to enter into and execute a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, Federal Emergency Management Agency through the Missouri Department of Homeland Security for the purpose of funding to support the cybersecurity coordinator position at the St. Louis Fusion Center upon approval of the Board of Estimate and Apportement and to expand funds by entering into contracts or otherwise for grant purposes and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one twenty-seven sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard and President Reed and ordinance authorizing and directing the Fire Commissioner on behalf of the Mayor and the City of St. Louis to enter into and execute a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, Federal Emergency Management Agency, fire prevention and safety grant to fund the twenty-nineteen smoking code alone program upon approval of the Board of Estimate and Apportement and to expand funds by entering into contracts or otherwise for grant purposes and containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of second reading report of standing committees.
We, we will dispense with line item fourteen, perfection consent.
Board Bill one eleven sponsored by Alderman Gunther and ordinance authorizing the execution of a lease agreement between the City of St. Louis, Missouri and SCF Lewis and Clark Fleeting LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, and containing the severability clause. Board Bill one twelve sponsored by Alderman Colder and ordinance repealing ordinance number six 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 two five, which ordinance relates to a lease between the City of St. Louis, Missouri and Eagle Marine Industries, Inc., a Missouri corporation authorizing the execution of a new lease agreement between the city and SCF Lewis Clark Terminals LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill one fifteen sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission and the Board of Estimate and Apportement, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports to provide and in the best interest of the city, the airport and the traveling public to amend the terms of the payment obligations by the abatement of minimum annual guarantee payment obligations of airport concessionaires and abatement of permit fees of certain for higher airport ground transportation operators pursuant to the four-month abatement policy attached heretofu and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one twenty sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook and ordinance amending ordinance number six nine three eight one, authorizing the execution of a first amendment to the said Mary Meacham lease in order to temporarily reduce the land and improvements in order that the city may lease the relinquished space to Walsh Construction Company for Walsh's building of the Merchant's Bridge, authorizing said Mary Meacham lease to be restored to its original area without the relinquished space upon completion of Walsh's rebuilding, authorizing other matters with respect thereto and containing a severability clause. Board Bill one twenty-one sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook and an ordinance amending ordinance six eight five seven three, which ordinance relates to a lease dated June twenty-second, twenty-ten between the City of St. Louis, Missouri and the Terminal Railroad Association and Illinois Corporation, authorizing the execution of a first amendment to lease agreement between the city and leasee under certain terms and conditions for a period of five years with two five-year mutual options for certain land at or near Madison Street to the north and, and Mount Street to the south and containing a severability clause. Board Bill one twenty-two sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook and ordinance amending ordinance number six eight five seven four, which ordinance relates to original lease dated April seventeenth, twenty-ten between the City of St. Louis, Missouri, Lewis and Clark Marine, Inc., as, as assigned to SCF Lewis and Clark Terminals, authorizing the execution of a first amendment to lease agreement between the city and leasee under certain conditions and terms and conditions for a period of five years with two five-year mutual options for certain land and more rights at or near Tyler Street and containing a severability clause. That is the extent of perfection consent calendar.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the perfection consent calendar.
Move by twenty-second, second about Alderman from the fourteenth, any discussion? Then move the second it. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. We will dispense with line item sixteen, third reading consent.
Board Bill number eighty-six.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the motion for third reading consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the third reading consent calendar.
Second. Then move, move by Alderman from the twenty-second, second about Alderman from the twenty-third, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans.
Aye.
Alderwoman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Iglesias.
Aye.
Alderman Colder.
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Martin.
Aye.
Alderwoman Grass.
Aye.
Alderwoman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Bakoro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice. Alderwoman Boyd. Twenty-seven, aye votes.
By a vote, stay in the motion, Alderman from the twenty-second and third read, and finally pass the aforementioned bill. With dispense with line item eighteen, report of enrollment.
Board Bill eighty-six.
All other business being suspended, President shall an open session fix his signature heretofu today and that these may become law. Alderwoman from the twenty-six, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, I would like to suspend the rules to introduce Resolution fifty-three.
Courtesy Resolution fifty-three.
Courtesy Resolution fifty-three honoring Esther Mae White, the mother of our beloved Chanel White.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-six, and then second about Alderman from the ninth, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans.
Aye.
Alderwoman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Iglesias.
Aye.
Alderman Colder.
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Martin.
Aye.
Alderwoman Grass.
Aye.
Alderwoman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Bakoro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice. Alderwoman Boyd. Twenty-seven, aye votes.
By a vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the twenty-six, and introduce Courtesy Resolution fifty-three. Madam Clerk, please place Courtesy Resolution fifty-three at the tell-in of Courtesy Resolutions Calendar.
So noted.
Alderman from the nineteenth, you recognize on the motion for our Courtesy Resolutions Calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that we adopt our Courtesy Resolution Calendar.
Move by Alderman from the nineteenth, and then second about Alderman from the tenth, Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, I'd like to just add my name to Courtesy Resolution number fifty-three, please.
Would you like to make a motion to make it in bank?
I would. I move that we in bank Courtesy Resolution fifty-three.
And move by Alderman from the first, second about Alderman from the sixth, any discussion? Then move the second that we amend Resolution number fifty-three to in bank, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Resolution fifty-three should be, it was adopted in bank.
So noted.
All right, it was moved by Alderman from the nineteenth, second about Alderman from the tenth, that we adopt our Courtesy Resolutions Calendar, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. First reading of resolutions.
Resolution fifty-two sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook, President Reed, Alderman Colder, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Bakoro, Alderman Cone, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderman Mohammed, Alderwoman Hubbard, and Alderman Todd, recycling request for proposal, RFP.
Alderwoman from the second, you recognize on the first reading of Resolution fifty-two.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to have Resolution fifty-two read out loud.
Madam Clerk, madam clerk, please read Resolution fifty-two.
Give me just a second. Resolution fifty-two, recycling request for proposal. Whereas on February the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty, the City of St. Louis issued a request for proposal to contract with qualified companies or teams of qualified companies starting in twenty twenty, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-two to manage solid waste, recyclables, yard waste that are generated by city residents and city departments. Whereas the stated RFP goals are to one, to utilize waste as resources for products and or energy, two, to decrease greenhouse gas emissions from solid waste management activities, and to three, minimize long-term costs to city residents. Whereas the proposed due date for the RFP was delayed until Thursday, April thirtieth, twenty twenty, due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Whereas the city received proposals on April thirtieth, twenty twenty, from a number of bidders and or some of whom may be able to reduce the amount of city's city residents' trash going into landfills and reduce the city's carbon footprint. And whereas the city's selection committee has not met since receiving the proposals to review and investigate them to determine if any of them are viable. And whereas the St. Louis Streets Department has not yet selected a winning proposal for the RFP and per the RFP time is of the essence. Since the selection committee's decision must be made a hundred and eighty days after the thirty, the April thirtieth submission date, which equates to April, I'm sorry, October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty. Whereas the current contract with waste management was signed on April twelfth, two thousand and two and has been renewed several times without a competitive bidding process. And further inaction with the RFP greatly risk another such renewal continuing the status quo. And whereas under the status quo, far less of the material city residents put in the blue bins is really being recycled and, and far more is going into landfills than most residents know and believe. Also, according to St. Louis City Recycles, an organization formed by Brightside St. Louis in partnership with the city based upon their latest waste audit conducted in twenty sixteen, it's, it found that nearly half of every day St. Louis waste is recyclable. However, when we look at the tonnage of trash versus recycling, St. Louis is only recycling about ten percent. That means around forty percent of recyclables are going into landfill. And whereas due to the lack of requiring new recycling technologies in the current contract and the lack of competitive process, approximately two point eight four million tons of city trash will have been landfill between two thousand and two, when the current contract was first signed, and twenty twenty-two, when it expires. And whereas this reality incongruent with the city's aggressive environmental goals evidenced by the Planning Commission adopt, adoption of the Climate Action and Adaption Plan in February twenty thirteen and by two, a resolution introduced by the Honorable Louis E. Reed, President of the Board of Alderman and adopted by the Board of Alderman on October twenty-seventh, twenty seventeen. Whereas the Climate Plan and Sustainability Plan note the immense benefit of recycling for the city including reducing landfill-bound waste, reducing landfill tipping fees, reducing the areas of land used for land waste and other significant social, environmental, and economic outcomes. And whereas the Climate Plan and Sustainability Plan directs the city to develop a plan for aggressive waste diversion that requires that multifamily, commercial, and industrial and institutional entities be held to a recycling and water diversion standard. Whereas the city has engaged in various efforts to support recycling, particularly the recycle responsibility education campaign, which aims to spread awareness about the detrimental effects of plastic bags and recycling. And whereas since the city signed its current, its current waste contract, after the turn of the century, much has changed in the world of trash. New technologies have been developed to reuse waste in productive and environmentally beneficial ways. New technologies have been developed to reuse waste in productive and environmentally beneficial ways. Trans- uh, traditional recycling has been more problematic because of dramat- dramatic changes in the international markets and the world's weather has become more dangerous because of climate change. And whereas cities and countries, cities and counties acco- across the country are leading the efforts to address climate change and other environmental hazards because of inaction in in Washington. And whereas after President Trump withdrew the United States from the Paris Climate Agreement, Mayor Cruzen joined four hundred and sixty other mayors who signed a pledge to adopt, honor and uphold the commitments to the goal enshrined in Paris Agreement. And whereas city residents by their words and deeds have made it clear that they do not want almost all of their trash going into landfill. And uh, and whereas the city spends a great deal of money and city trash trucks emit a great deal of carbon under the status quo method of waste disposal. Whereas these efforts and goals of the RFP will signific- significantly increase the landfill diversion rate, will reduce regional greenhouse gas emissions, will promote the production of fuels made from non-recyclable materials and will lower the city's carbon footprint. And whereas these efforts and goal will realize will realize material cost savings in a competitive municipal solid waste tipping fee and will reduce wear and tear on city streets and trash trucks. Whereas these efforts and goal will improve the lives of city residents by advancing the federal smart initiative, cities initiative through the use of advanced technology by advancing the city towards a zero-waste future and by improving health conditions, air quality and salaries from new jobs created. And whereas while the COVID-nineteen pandemic is overriding issue of twenty twenty, that is rightly getting the attention it deserves, the future health of our city and our planet is the overriding issue of our time and doing something about it cannot and should not wait. And whereas in order to achieve these efforts and goals, it is necessary that the Streets Department expedite the RFP process and select the winning proposal as soon as possible in accordance with the RFP goals. One, utilize waste as resource for products and energy. Two, decrease greenhouse gas emissions from solid waste management activities. And three, minimize long-term costs to city residents. Now therefore let it be resolved by the Board of Alderman of the City of St. Louis that we call upon the Street Department to expedite the RFP process and select a winning proposal in accordance with the RFP's goals to utilize waste as resources for pro- products and or energy, decrease greenhouse gas emissions from solid waste management activities, minimize long-term costs to city residents on or before October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty deadline or extend such deadline to allow the selection process to be properly completed. We further direct the clerk of the board to prepare a copy of this resolution at the end that it may be sent to those deemed appropriate by the sponsor. Introduce this ninth, ninth day of October, twenty twenty, the Honorable Lisa Middlebrook, Alderwoman Second Ward and the President uh, Lewis Reed, President of the Board of Alderman. I adopted this ninth day of October, twenty twenty.
Alderman from the second?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I would like to refer Resolution number fifty-two to the Streets Committee.
It's been moved by the Alderman, Alderman from the second to send Resolution fifty-two to Streets Committee, entertain a second on that.
Second.
Second about Alderman from the fourteenth, uh, and also Alderman from the thirteenth. Uh, hold on a second, uh, any further discussion?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
I would like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that, add Alderman from fourteenth as co-sponsor. Alderman from the twenty-second?
Okay. Yes, Mr. President, um, also can we make sure that all the co-sponsors that are listed on our agenda be placed on the official uh, resolution that's uploaded to the website?
Yeah, Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Uh, all of the current co-sponsors, please add them to the list.
Mr. President?
Alderman from nineteenth?
Mr. President, would you please add my name to this resolution?
Madam Clerk, please add the Alderman from the nineteenth's name to the res- to Resolution number fifty-two. Alderman from the fourteenth also. Uh, Alderman from the Alderman, uh, Alderman from the fourth. Uh, Alderman, Alderman from, uh, Alderman from the thirteenth, Alderman from the tenth, you have a uh, a question and also-
No, please add, I would like to, please add my name to this, sir.
Okay, the Alderman from twelfth and also the Alderman from the tenth, uh, add their names also. Uh, I, I got the thirteenth. Uh, and got the fourteenth already.
Mr. President?
And uh, the Alderman from nineteenth, you recognize?
Mr. President, if there's no objection, I would like to uh, make a motion to put this resolution in bank to move forward.
Objection.
Objection.
There's an objection, there's objection to it.
There's an objection, so let's just move forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So uh, it's been moved by Alderman from the second, seconded by the um, Alderman from the fourteenth, uh, that we refer Resolution fifty-two to Streets. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please assign Resolution fifty-two to Streets.
So noted.
Second reading.
We have none.
Miss Lane has unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
The following meetings will be held via webinar. Tuesday, October thirteenth, the Corona special, the Coronavirus Special Committee will have a meeting at ten AM. Wednesday, October fourteenth, HUDs will have a meeting at nine AM. Rules will have a meeting at ten AM and Public Safety will have a meeting at one PM. Friday, October the sixteenth, full board meeting, ten AM via webinar. That is the extent of the announcement.
All right, any further announcements? Alderman from the twenty-fifth?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I actually have uh, two announcements uh, this morning. Um, one, in my capacity of the uh, Chair of the Parks and Environmental Committee, uh, we have a citywide event taking place this weekend uh, organized by Ms. Jenny, uh, and forgive me if I mispronounced her last name, um, uh, gosh, uh, I actually just blanked on it. So um, Jenny, I apologize. Um, but the organization uh, or the efforts that she's putting together are to essentially uh, encourage St. Louisans to get out of their homes and into our parks uh, in a safe, respectable, socially-distanced manner um, to enjoy some fresh air, take a collective breath of fresh air and uh, you know, pause uh, and and breathe for St. Louis. And so um, she's encouraging folks to uh, bring a blanket, uh, bring a picnic and uh, hang out in our city parks. Um, the event is actually taking place in four of our city parks, um, Marquette, Gwen Guyles to the west, uh, O'Fallon in the north and Allo Plaza downtown. Um, the event is from ten AM to five PM. Um, and then at three PM, there's actually a uh, yoga session that'll be taking place in all four of those parks um, that's hosted by the collective St. Louis. Um, so I encourage everyone to um, take a breath and get out and enjoy our wonderful parks this weekend. Um, that's taking place tomorrow, ten-ten, twenty twenty, um, from ten AM to five PM. And again, it's in Marquette Park in the south, O'Fallon Park in the north, uh, Gwen Guyles Park to the west and Allo Plaza downtown. Um, and my second announcement is uh, also for ten-ten, um, it's ten-ten-one-thousand, uh, which is being organized by some of my neighbors in the Dutch Town area. Um, and it's to come plant with us. And so um, we have a thousand bulbs that we'd like to be planting around the neighborhood. Um, the event starts at nine AM tomorrow and runs till noon. Um, people can meet up at the Nick, uh, which is at the corner of Merrimack and Compton. Um, and if you'd like to find out more information about i- either of those events, um, ten-ten, twenty twenty, they have a event page on Facebook and then ten-ten-one-thousand, the neighborhood uh, event to come plant with us can be found at uh, dutchtownstl.org. Thanks.
All right, thanks. Alderman from the twenty-second?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to announce that we're gonna have a Streets uh, Track and Refuge Committee hearing on October thirteenth, Tuesday at nine AM. And also I do believe we have a celebrity birthday today. President Lewis Reed, is that right?
Oh, yeah, thanks. Thank you.
Happy birthday, Mr. President.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you all. Thank you all. Once you get over forty, you want to be a speaker enough.
Shall we sing?
No, oh.
Twenty-five, twenty-five years young, Mr. President?
Yeah, I'm there, forty, forty-five, you know, I lost.
You're right.
At your heart rate, your age.
And to Alderman Dwayne Evans, happy birthday.
Happy birthday. Okay, thank you.
Happy birthday.
From one Libran to to the other Librants in the month of October and quarter, a lot of quarter, September.
Balance. Alderman from the second?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Cree just wants to say hi. She is out of school today and she has been losing her mind trying to say hi. Say hi. Hi.
How you doing?
Hey, Cree. Hey, sweetie.
Thanks for calling us today.
Hey, Cree.
Beautiful baby. Yeah, enjoy your day off of school. Any further announcements? Any further announcements?
Mr. President?
Oh, thank you. Thank you. That's awesome. Alderman from the nineteenth?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to announce that we are having a ribbon cutting tomorrow and nineteen oh one, um, Washington Avenue. We have a PTSD therapy clinic opening and for veterans and I'm very excited about this. It's something that's very needed and it adds to the additional services that are provided in the nineteenth ward. This makes the six, number six, or clinics and or other services that we have available. And take a gander if you come down that way, nineteen hundred Washington has a whole block of new businesses and they're all African-American. Thank you.
Oh, wow. Well, thank you and congratulations. And thank you for all the work that you're doing to really expand the nineteenth ward and open it up for business and residents alike and all the new development. Thank you for all your hard work, Alderman. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognized on the motion to excuse.
Yes, Mr. President, members of board, I move to excuse the Alderwoman from the eighth and twenty-seventh due to necessary absence.
Daggone.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the twenty-second and seconded by the Alderman from the tenth, any discussion? And that was all from the eighth and the twenty-second, correct?
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh. Wanted to see if you catch that. I had to do, I had to do that for the Alderman for the twenty-fifth, but the Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you gotta, when, when, you just gotta let it go. I was gonna see if he caught it. So it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose?
No.
Aye.
Little slow. Motion carries. Alderman from twenty-second, recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Sure, Mr. President, members of board, I move to adjourn until Friday, October sixteenth, twenty twenty, ten AM.
Been moved by Alderman from twenty-second, sent by Alderman from tenth, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose? We stand adjourned. Thanks all. Have a safe weekend and a great week.